Hello everyone. Hello everyone, I'm Helen De Kaiser, Chair of the League of Women Voters of Weston. And behalf of our league, I want to welcome everyone to today's second of three consecutive Saturday candidate events. If you missed last Saturday's event moderated by Kay Maxwell for candidates for first electmen's position and the Board of Selectmen. It's now available on the state on our website. It's a new website at LWVWestonCT.org. And while you're there, you'll see a way to register for next week's event. You'll also see how to submit questions for candidates for that event. And you'll be able to notice at the same time that soon, and I do hope it will be early next week. The 2021 Voters Guide will appear on the site as well. That will have a lot of additional information on backgrounds of candidates. So you'll learn more about each candidate. And you'll learn their views on particular questions, three of which were asked by the league for them to fill out. Also, I'd like to take a quick moment to thank all of the league members who have done a lot of behind the scenes work to make today's and all of our debates possible, and also the Voters Guide that's coming. I also thank, of course, all of our candidates who are participating today and have participated in the Voters Guide materials being sent as well. And very much appreciate all of you and Laura Smiths, who will be today's moderator. Laura is a longtime Weston resident and lead member and is currently president of the League of Women Voters of Connecticut. Take it away, Laura.
Thank you, Helen, and thank you to everyone for participating today. I'm actually a former resident of Weston. I currently live in Norwalk, where I am also the co-convener of the Norwalk League of Women Voters. Okay, today we are going up to read some roles. I'm going to introduce the candidates and we're going to read some roles. This is how we're going to do this. What we've done before everyone went on, we had a very impartial judge of the order of questions. Each candidate will get a question and they'll be able to answer for the first time. Each candidate will get a question to answer first, and they'll have a minute and a half to respond to that question. And then candidates after that will get a minute to respond to that same question. Okay, our candidates for Board of Education today are Peter Gordon, Republican, Taffy Miller, Democrat, David Felton, Republican, Tony Pesco, Democrat, and Bernadette Kingsley, Democrat. Our first question goes to Mr. Gordon. Mr. Gordon, are you ready?
Good morning.
Good. And if you're not speaking, please obviously keep your, I think this is not for most of us. For the past 18 months, at least, we've been doing a lot of Zoom, so most of us are familiar with these rules. The first question goes to you, Mr. Gordon. The Weston BOE must adhere to the mandates and follow directions handed down by the legislature and the State Department of Education. How does this affect local school boards? How does the Weston School Board deal with this?
Well, first and foremost, thank you very much to the League of Women Voters for our debate this morning, my fellow debaters. I think my sentiment will be echoed by our fellow candidates here. And that's a good question. So I'm new to the process, but I did do some homework. And let me give you a couple of examples where what happens in Hartford directly affects us here positively and negatively. So one good example is there's a state statute that enables us to do a non-lapsing fund. And that was a great discussion that we saw last week. And it really is a good mechanism financially to dedicate funds that were unused one year towards the same objective in the following year. And I think it's a good attempt at financial responsibility by the board, which is one of our major fiduciary responsibilities to the town of Weston. But also I found sometimes during our discussions with the board as residents in the board, explaining this non-lapsing fund to the residents, some of the communication was lacking. Like it was really hard to understand the rationale, the objectives and the mechanisms that the state allows us by statute to implement. And I actually went to the Newtown School of Board, School of Board of Education founder. Their presentation, it was really clear. It was really showed the objectives, the multiple parts, the financial mechanism. And I think in that case Hartford actually is a good thing for us. We take advantage of it. And my only input to the board as it's constituted is a little sharper, more concise. Sort of as Tony likes to get to the bottom line, like let's keep it down to a couple of minutes. Let's have a few slides that really explains it. And I think the residents will be much better off understanding it. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. Ms. Miller, who can have a shot at that question as well?
Mute? Yes, I'm muted. Hartford's role, I think probably the greatest example of how we ought to, you know, work in partnership with Hartford and the governance that comes down is in the case of COVID. I think we have had to follow the science. We've had to follow governance that comes out of Hartford, of the state. And it has provided huge support for us in enabling us to understand that the due diligence has been conducted around what's needed to keep our children safe. And in being able to sit back and rely, we don't sit back, rather, we rely closely on the governance that has been handed down to the state, by the state to all of us. And then also to lead as needed. We follow the science and the governance and we lead with creative local solutions and support. That's just, you know, been a really important partnership. So I'll leave it there.
Okay, Mr. Felton.
Thank you. So my take on Hartford's role in the Weston Public Schools is that we want to maintain control or I want to maintain control as a board member as local as possible. And part of the Board of Education's role is to look at the parents, the students, the educators in our district and match what they believe is best for our town and our students with the rules and the mandates placed upon us by Hartford. So I think as far as our role, there is going to be mandates that come from Hartford, from Governor Lamont, from Department, DPH, and other jurisdictions that would take, would trump what we can do as local officials. But what we have to do is find the happy, the balance between what is mandated by Hartford and what is best for our students, our educators, our staff and our families. And that's an area that I want to focus on.
Thank you, Mr. Pesco. Tony, you're muted.
Sorry about that. My view on this is that Hartford does give us as a town, a huge amount of flexibility to be able to craft a vision and to make sure that we work with the administration to execute that mission and that vision consistent with what the taxpayers and our parents want from the school system. The one thing that I think we need to, you know, my, the one focus that I have is the unfunded mandate that's come, that comes from Hartford. And those, I think, create challenges for all of the tests surrounding towns. And I'd be looking to Hartford to really try to see if we can act, if they can actually work on a solution so that all of the towns can actually work together to deal with a number of unfunded mandates that are passed down from Hartford.
Thank you. Ms. Kingsley.
Hi. I think that the legislation that's passed down to us from the state and nationally is a great opportunity for us to review what we do through the lens of best practices at the national level and at the state level. I think that when we think about our academics and our safety and that kind of capacity, it's a good way to review to make sure that there's not things that we can improve and do better and strengthen what we do in Weston. I think the role of the Board of Education in that is to make sure that when we implement any kind of change, it's sensitive to our community and can make what we do even stronger and better.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to go to question two. Ms. Miller, the question is for you. You'll get the shot to answer this question first. In the past, Weston received a small percentage of capital costs for maintenance and new construction from the state. What is the plan for funding construction projects in 2022 and going forward?
Thank you. Well, we are in the process of doing a full review with the town on all of the town and school buildings. As far as how we can fund future projects around facilities and current projects around facilities, we have a lot of decisions to make. You know, the facilities really is when we think about capital budgets, we have to think about what we're going to do in the future, not just now. We have some priorities, of course, but really the health and safety are the priorities of our school buildings. We have to think about how to enhance the safety of all of our buildings. We have to provide the right technology for all of our kids. We've gotten to a point where some of the technology we're using is really out of date and we have to invest in those things. We want to assess the state of all our facilities. We want to review all of our optimization options. So I think that, you know, our budget really needs to be very, very carefully parceled out vis a vis the priorities that are at the top of that list.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Felton, same question.
Thank you. So as far as the budget process goes, I'm new to the Board of Ed, so I've been watching how the budget is created. And one of the areas that I've been advocating for is specifically for this current school year and the upcoming school year is with inflated costs of materials, labor, and the difficulty of getting things done due to the pandemic. That's the best of our ability. We defer what we can in a smart way. So things that don't need to be done this year that can be put off to the following year be put off because of the increased expense to do it at this time.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Kingsley.
Thank you. As Taffy said, you know, the town is undergoing an optimization review to look at all of our facilities. I think it's prudent to wait till we see the outcome of that study before we make any concrete decisions. But being mindful about the budget, I think one of the most important things that we can consider too is that whatever optimizations we make, we want them to be able to evolve as education changes and we can continue to provide the best opportunity. So the way that we taught 10 years ago might not be the same way that we teach today. So if we're designing the future, we want to make sure that it is definitely agile so that we can keep up with best practices at the same time that we're mindful about how we're spending our money. Thank you.
Mr. Gordon.
Thank you very much. Another great question. So I'll take it from two directions. One is I reviewed Slide 57 of the comprehensive 74 slide deck that was presented in early 2021. There's not a line item for capital equipment, nor facilities per se. But far down on the list from salaries and benefits, I probably put together a little bit of quick arithmetic and it's a pretty small budget. But that's okay. That's the salaries and benefits, about 78%. Let's say capital equipment and facilities, about 2%, 3%, but we can work with that. Town of Weston, the board's fortunate because I'm a member of ASHRAI. ASHRAI is the U.S. Professional Organization for HVAC Improvement, Ventilation, Filtration, Keeping Kids Safe in School. Bring a lot of that expertise to my role. And I think with my connections, we can make some smart HVAC choices, improve OpEx, CapEx, keep the kids safe, give some life to our air conditioning systems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Felton. And finally, Mr. Pesco.
Yeah, there's really a two-pronged answer to that question. In 2017, there was a facility studies done and out of that came a 10-year capital plan. That 10-year capital plan basically involves spending anywhere from $800,000 to $1 million a year on capital projects. Those capital projects are really priority projects that are meant to really deal with those things that really need to get addressed in terms of our facilities. I think long term, when we look at our facilities optimization plan and look at upgrading all of our facilities, I think we'll have to think about three ways of paying for that. One is ongoing capital projects. Number two is grants from the state and the federal government. And the third is going to be bonding depending on the size of the capital improvements that we're going to have to be, that are going to have to be made in the future.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving along. We're moving along pretty swiftly here. I'm really impressed. Everybody's staying on time. It's so, so, so nice to see. All right, so question three. Mr. Felton, this is your question first. Are you ready? You are affiliated with a political party. What are the top three issues of your party that define you? How will that impact how you view the issues in the Board of Edu, on the Board of Education?
So I have to be affiliated with a party, even if it's an unaffiliated party. I don't think that my party affiliation has any bearing on my participation on the Board of Ed. I have interacted with all the other Board of Ed members and I have had to ask even to this day if they're Democrat or Republican. It's transparent during the Board of Ed. When we meet, nobody cares about party affiliation. So I don't actually see myself as beholden to the Republican Party insofar as because I'm associated or affiliated with the Republican Party. When I decided to run for the Board of Ed, I decided to run based on my philosophies and how I can make positive change to the students, the teachers, the staff and the other parents in town. I have not yet seen a case where I haven't been able to get information, ask questions or be welcomed from people of the Democratic Party. So I don't, I don't see my party affiliation as having any bearing on my role in the BOE. I'm true to myself and my goals are to provide a better experience for all of our students and teachers and staff, regardless of my party affiliation.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Miller, same question to you.
Yeah, it's a great question. And I'm going to have to agree that, you know, the Board of Ed over the last couple of years has been one of the most cohesive groups in that we work so well together. We are, we keep our political affiliations out of the room. We work collaboratively on what matters, excuse me, on what matters for children. For example, on the curriculum committee, we understand what we teach and why we teach it. And we are single-minded and focused on providing the children with the very best education they can have. And political affiliation does not enter the room. You know, some of the more perhaps divisive issues that have arisen over the last year around DEI, for example, diversity, equity, inclusion, I also think is a less complicated issue than it needs to be. And that we as a board are in full agreement that we invite and welcome staff and students from all backgrounds and that we unequivocally as a group believe that our curriculum, our policies, our practices need to infuse and celebrate that diversity at all levels. That's a great example of how, while it's an important issue and there is some disagreement in the world on how we address that issue, we as a board are incredibly collaborative and incredibly cohesive on how we address that and how it's important for the children in our, in our school.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you again. Another great question. So the Rs in town definitely are proponents, clarion call for keeping schools and zoning decisions local. I think that's probably accounts for most of the sentiment of our residents of Weston. And we really want to have a singular direction towards academic excellence. So that's sort of the overarching objective of all of us. On a personal level, you know, Bernie mines, childhood extracurricular class, we get along, right? We're going to have to make it work out. We're going to have some hard-nosed decisions to make. But in the end of the day, honestly comes down, I'm a STEM guy, right? I have periodic table behind me, right? I look at it like a math equation, right? Add skills. This is skilled group of folks, experience, wisdom of past experience on boards. You throw a little bit in the skinning game like Bernie and I have, you multiply that by integrity, you got a pretty good functional group of folks. Thank you.
Ms. Kingsley.
Thank you. As the Board of Education, our primary goal is to take care of the children and make sure that they're getting the best opportunities as possible. And I really don't see that as a partisan issue at all. And so when we come to the table to do this important work, it's really about collaboration and working together. Whatever differences in perspectives we have, we know that they tie into us caring so much for the outcomes of our kids. In terms of the biggest issues that we need to face, it's the academic excellence of our students and also their emotional and social well-being. So as long as we're addressing that and working towards that as a team united, I think that that's the most important way to bring about the best outcomes. So, thank you.
Okay, and finally, Mr. Pesco.
Yeah, it's actually been a privilege to serve on the board with my colleagues and I agree with everyone. Party affiliation really hasn't been an issue at all. It's, we're here to serve the town and serve our students. Academic excellence, social, emotional well-being, the state of our facilities, those are not partisan issues. And that's what we're here to work on. And like I said, it's been a privilege, given what we've seen going on in other boardrooms. It's just been a great experience working with my colleagues on the board to try to address some of these issues over the last several years.
Okay, thank you. Before we go further, I just want to make a note, there are some questions in the Q and A section. And right now we had not planned on taking live questions. If we have some time at the end, there may, we may be able to get to a few of them. Questions were sent in ahead of time by members of the public. So I just wanted to point that out to those who are putting some questions in the chat, some good questions, and hopefully we'll get to them, if time permitting. Thank you. Okay, the next question is for Mr. Pesco first. And it is a question, it is, it's an important question. What is the position of the Board of Education on teaching or supporting critical race theory in our schools?
Very good question. You know, we do not, you know, and this is one where, you know, I've gotten a number and the board members have gotten a number of emails over the last, over the last year. We do not teach critical race theory in the K-12 curriculum. That being said, diversity, equity, inclusion, creating an environment where our policies, our hiring practices and what we teach our students are diverse, equitable and inclusive is a priority of the school district. It's really important that our curriculum and the way we develop our curriculum is very clear and transparent. And the entire community can actually watch that in action through our curriculum renewal process. Our curriculum is actually renewed for each one of the courses that we teach on a rotating basis. The textbooks are reviewed. It's done in public and the public is welcome to actually observe and ask questions of the process. In addition, each and every parent are welcome to talk to the administrator and their teachers about what their children are learning in school. And so we are very clear that creating a diverse, equitable and inclusive climate for our students and staff is a priority. But critical race theory and the tagline of critical race theory is not taught in the K-12 curriculum at Weston.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gordon.
Thank you again. So I'm a STEM person clearly. And yesterday I had a real great, great day. I took a walk in Frampton property with Tom Fallia, right, our tree warden. And he gave me the history of environmental stewardship of Weston, or related to the town. So I look at sort of STEM plus environmental stewardship and I think we should double down and extend our expertise in environmental science from pre-K to 12. So really focus on that as a distinction in a way that we can differentiate ourselves from other school districts, right? So take the green squad of the high school and make it the green squad from pre-K to 12, right? I think the Weston Pollinators would love that, the water quality folks, the sustainability board. So we have a unique opportunity with, again, the expertise we have in town to focus at being a green school district, right? It's a great STEM platform. The kids are eager to learn. The kids are there for resource for us as town managers and leaders. Thank you.
Ms. Miller, the question, let me reread the question because I think we went off the track there. What is the position of the Board of Education on teaching or supporting critical race theory in our schools?
I understand the question. Thanks, Laura. So I mean, I agree with Tony. We've got a very clear commitment to including diversity, equity, inclusion as a, as a number, you know, as a really high priority value in how we do our work. That is not critical race theory practice. We believe that the curriculum, the policies, the practices all have to be representative of the kind of school body, diverse school body in our students and staff that we're looking for. We have, you know, three paths that we're working on as an administration around, around DEI. Obviously, the first is curriculum. You know, we're examining the Weston Public School curriculum to make sure that we are literate in racial diversity and equity and inclusion. We of course are going to study black culture, history, race. It's part of who we are as a nation. We're not going to shy away from studying those things and teaching those things. We're going to lift up communities of color. I don't think anybody is against lifting up communities of color for their enormous accomplishments, their contributions to art, science, music, et cetera. That is our role as educators, is to lift up, you know, the STEM folks and the scientists. Am I done?
Sorry.
Am I done?
You can finish your sentence, but yes, go ahead.
Yeah, so I think, I think we, yeah, I think we unequivocally move forward in support of DEI, but it's not critical race theory.
Thank you very much. I'm going to let Ms. Kingsley go next on that question.
Sure. As it said already, critical race theory is not part of the Weston curriculum. It is imperative though that the Weston community really value the highest standards for educational equity. And I think that we do this by consistently looking for ways to celebrate diversity and to nurture the uniqueness in our student body, but really also the world outside of Weston too. If we can be successful in including a spirit of inclusion and compassion and honesty and civility and kindness, it's the bedrock of our school culture and really permeates the entire curriculum. In the classroom, on the sports field, enriches our arts. If we can be successful in doing this, we can empower a whole generation with the will and the wisdom and the courage and the heart to really shape a better world. So, thank you.
Mr. Felton.
Thank you. So critical race theory today is not part of the Weston Board of Education. But I think that there is real concern in our own town and in surrounding towns as to whether or not it will become part of our mandated education. And I think what we need to do as Board of Ed members is we need to be as transparent as we can with the parents of our children. And we need to have open communication to make sure that anything that's mandated from Hartford. So for example, we do have an elective course at the high school level called American Tapestry. And that was subject to some confusion from people who wrote to me asking if this is CRT and if this is a mandatory course. And I asked because I wasn't sure of myself. An American Tapestry is not a mandatory course. It is an elective course. So as far as CRT goes and Weston Public Schools, our job as a Board of Ed is to listen to the parents and advocate for what's best for us. And that might mean going to Hartford or lobbying against mandates from Hartford.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving along. Ms. Kingsley, the question five is for you. Here is, okay, there are bus driver shortages in school districts around the state of Connecticut. In the past, has this been a problem for the town of Weston or is it a result of the pandemic?
Being new to the board, I can speak from more specifically about right now. And I know that COVID in particular is very much affecting. And I know that COVID in particular is very much affecting uh, bus drivers as it is uh, a lot of jobs across the country. Um, I think that this is something that the district has been doing a very good job of uh, compensating for. As a parent, um, I get those emails when bus routes are going to be combined because we have somebody out for the day. And there's a constant attention to making sure that it doesn't impact um, our students' ability to be able to get to and from school and also to their other activities. Um, I think that um, it's definitely something that we hope will get better in the future. But uh, it's something that uh, we're going to have to plan for and make sure that we can constantly stay on top of.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Gordon.
Thank you. Uh, again, I'll take a couple uh, salience towards uh, uh, this question. One is, um, I do get really good communications about uh, transportation and coupled with uh, the school dismissal system. I think that's a really good communication capability of the school district. It's definitely helpful for those of us who work full-time to plan our day a little, a little tighter. Uh, I like to see if our, uh, or our perceived problem is uh, uh, at a similar level of neighboring districts, sort of an apples to apples comparison. Is this affecting all of us evenly, or do we have a particularly uh, interesting challenge to overcome? Or maybe we're actually doing better than most and we've done pretty good. And I think this will lead us also talking a little bit about um, the sidewalk pickup, uh, issues like that at the schools, maybe looking at that more heavily and critically about uh, managing when buses aren't so convenient and we have to uh, uh, take advantage of that, that infrastructure. Maybe we can prove it there too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, Ms. Miller.
Yeah, I don't, I think my, my colleagues have, have, have talked about it a little bit already, but I, I, I think that the um, listen, there's a labor shortage in America, um, at, in every single industry. And if we are faced with this right now, we will, uh, we'll, we'll fix it. We'll get to it. Uh, kids are not going to have to uh, walk to school, although let's not um, dismiss the notion of being creative about new ways of um, you know, ensuring our kids are healthy and getting exercise and doing walk to school programs. Something we, I've thought of for a very long time, that if we do, you know, parent escorted walk to school programs, it does resolve um, a very short-term issue. But in the long game, are we not going to have buses to bring our kids to school? We are. And um, and we will resolve this short-term problem.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Felton.
Do you repeat the question? Because I think we may have gotten a bit off of topic.
All right.
Come out of my time to answer.
Okay, good. Okay, not, don't start him yet. Um, there are bus driver shortages in school districts around the state of Connecticut. In the past, has this been a problem for Weston, or is it a result of the pandemic?
That's what I thought the question was. So I operate a small business and I've spoken to so many of my clients, literally bakers, car driver services. There is a labor shortage, at least throughout the Northeast. I don't have clients on the West Coast, but you don't have to do much more than watch any news channel to determine there is a labor shortage. So I don't see the current bus situation as something that we as a Board of Ed could have predicted or quite frankly, have a lot of control over. It's, it's unfortunate. What I think is, is fortunate though, is again, as a small community, when I see those emails from the uh, bus management company that buses are being combined, buses are being uh, running late, I understand it. I know what's going on in the world. I know what's going on in our community. So for the purposes of how it's going to impact our students, I, I don't believe it is. I don't believe it's a Board of Education policy nor procedure that has led to this. It is a nationwide labor shortage. And quite honestly, this is probably one of the few cases where I'm going to defer to Hartford and to the federal government to say, y- you have to help fix this. There's some reason why people are leaving the workforce. We need those people back because operating a bus to send our kids to uh, school, i- it's a, it's a critical job.
Thank you very much. Okay, um, we're going to go to, we have a couple more questions. There's a couple in the Q and A I'm going to ask. Um, just so we can, you know, mix it up a little bit. We do have some time. Um, hold on one second. All right, this is from someone who would like to know. I'm going to start the first question. We're going to go backwards this time. Um, Ms. Kingsley, this will, you can answer this one first. Um, the, this person would like to know the candidate's positions on mask mandates and vaccination requirements for students and teachers and adding in COVID testing for all.
Thank you. Great question. Um, I think that the most important thing for us to do right now is obviously maintain as safe of environment as possible for the kids. Um, we are working really hard to make sure that nobody is sick and missing academic time or put on a quarantine and missing classroom time if that can be prevented by containing um, viral spread. I think the best guidance for these kinds of choices really come from um, our state and local health department, where we have the experts looking into what's best practices for trans, maintaining transmission and um, keeping our kids in school. And to me, the highest priority is number one, health and number two, academic seat time. Making sure that we can um, follow those guidelines so the kids can get the best app, um, education as possible and uh, do that as in person as much as possible. So whatever guidance we can, that scientifically makes sense for us to keep that um, that level of attendance is, is what I support.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gordon.
Uh, thank you. Another, another great tough question. So uh, we've been in it for twenty months now. I began uh, my uh, adventure with uh, SARS-CoV-2 on January sixth, twenty twenty. I had engineers in Wuhan, China. They were implementing some of my inventions to combat an unknown pneumonia at that time. So I've been uh, at the center of the global discussion about interventions, vaccines, face masks, ear treatment, uh, other techniques. Uh, I'm, I'm good with the mandate from Hartford right now. I think uh, all uh, barriers, although leaky, serve uh, the purpose to protect children in the greater community. I think we'll move out of this pretty quickly as the virus load reduces globally. And uh, you know, uh, maybe this is a uh, tip of my hat a little bit to Laura, who I, if I understand her background. You know, no kid is an island, right? No student is an island, right? We're all in this together. So, let's uh, do what we can.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Pesco.
Yeah, uh, you know, I always uh, say the board, board members are not uh, medical professionals or public health officials. And we need to rely on our medical advisors, public health officials, um, uh, writ large. Um, and so, you know, I think the governor's executive order makes a lot of sense. We need to keep our children and our staff safe. Um, I think that uh, the need, the entire community needs to he, adhere to that. Because while we try to, to do everything possible to keep our kids safe in schools, um, parents in the community need to do their part uh, at home as well. So that we don't see, um, you know, infections in the school resulting from um, get-togethers outside of school. Um, so with respect to what's going on in the schools and the governor's executive mandate, I'm all for it. Uh, I think community-wide, uh, the entire community needs to pitch in, because like uh, Peter said, we're all in this together.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's see. Mr., oh, Ms. Miller.
Yeah. Um, you know, at the beginning of the pandemic, um, it's not an exaggeration to say that we got, well, I am exaggerating, but a hundred letters a week from parents saying, how dare you send our children into the classrooms? And we got a hundred letters a week, exaggerating to make a point, saying, how dare you keep our children out of the classroom. I mean, it was both sides. And we read every single letter. And we listened and we heard every family. And we had to really rely on our health department and the state and the science. And then at the same time, we had to be really creative about what we do locally, how we support children during the summertime and after school and online, et cetera. So currently, we're, we, we're in that same position where it's a tough, it's a tough discussion. And some families really are having a hard time with it, but know that the Board of Education is listening to every single family and reading every letter and taking them to heart and making decisions based on the best science for the children. Thanks.
Mr. Felton.
I think I may have a slightly different view than my colleagues on the board. Um, I don't think Hartford should be making the decisions for the Board of Ed. I uh, want to just say first, though, that at the moment, we are bound by Governor Lamont. Governor Lamont has mandated that our children wear masks in school. And until that mandate is lifted, the Board of Ed Superintendent has absolutely no say in whether or not students wear masks. My take on the mask is that the governor should lift the order and leave the decision to the superintendent. And the superintendent should make their decision based on what they know to be in the best interest of our schools. And that would be a combination of community spread, doctors and science. So I have a child who's in the first grade. He has never attended school without a mask. And he's at a critical point where he needs to learn how to read non-verbal communication. That is not possible when he is behind a mask. So my take on it is the, the governor needs to lift the order and let the superintendent and each school district make their own decisions for what's in their school's best interest.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to move on. Um, another question here. We're going to go in reverse order this time. Um, Ms. Kingsley, you can answer first. The question is, what is the latest word on population projections for school age Westonites?
Great question. So important for our planning and what we do. Um, right now, our enrollment is, has been decreasing a little bit over time, um, particularly in the higher grades, the middle and the high school. Um, we do see a little bit of bump in the Hurlbut age group. Um, and we do have a lot new, a lot of new families moving into town. I think it's to be determined exactly what's going to happen with those enrollment numbers. Um, I think that the most important thing that we can do is stay on top of the projections and um, make sure that when we're doing our long-term planning, we also realize that it's an incremental process so that we can be reactive to looking at how students uh, attend to school and how our enrollment changes. And making sure that when we try to budget and think about some of these things that are going to become fixed expenses, that they are flexible enough to be responsive to what we see in the classroom. So I think that uh, the answer to that is that the best data is always the data that we see right now in school. Um, as you project further and further out, um, it becomes more ambiguous. So we definitely need that information to be aware. But um, also just to uh, be ready to respond to what we see in the future.
And Mr. Pesco, same question for you.
Yeah, over the last decade, we've obviously seen a decrease in our school population to the tune of about a little bit more than one percent a year. Um, COVID has made a lot of the work that the demographers are going to be doing uh, a little questionable. It's still yet to determine um, what the impact of COVID is going to have long-term in terms of our community. Um, we've seen uh, I think five hundred uh, new families of move into town. Um, as a result, what we're seeing is an increase in the student population in Hurlbut. Um, a lot of the new families don't have school-aged children yet or, or don't have any children yet. And so it's yet to be seen what that, what those cohorts are, cohorts are going to look like in the next couple of years. We are also seeing at the upper range, which is in the upper school, a decrease in the school population. And I think um, much of it is because uh, families have also taken the opportunity for their older children to actually sell their homes before uh, their children are graduating from the upper schools. And so um, I think we're, we're seeing a mixed message. We're seeing basically an increase in the lower grades and a decrease in the upper grades.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Felton.
So I think that there is no question that at uh, present and over the past several years, we've seen declining enrollment. And I don't think that we know exactly why the enrollment declined, but then COVID hit. And as Tony said, a, a ton of sales took place in Weston. There were definitely a lot of people who used it as an exit strategy and other people who, with potentially kids coming into the district. So I think the, the real issue that the Board is tackling right now is looking at the facilities as a whole, the four facilities. And we have to be, we can't make decisions based solely on what we know today. We have to make decisions based on what is anticipated. And sometimes what's anticipated, it's not a science. It's putting together information from various sources and taking the best educated guess uh, that you can. So as far as uh, you know, the, the declining enrollment, that's something that I think is being dealt with by looking at the four schools that we have. They're all, with the exception, I believe, of the high school in some level of, of disrepair, Hurlbut and the middle school being the worst. So once we have a good handle of the physical facilities, we can then look closer at the uh, declining enrollment and how we make sure that our students are educated in the best facilities possible.
Thank you. Ms. Miller.
Thank you. Um, I think the um, the priority here, vis a vis enrollment to me in my, wearing my curriculum hat, is that we maintain class sizes that are within the guidelines um, so that we have enough attention on our children. And as enrollment increases in the younger years and decreases in the later years, that does mean adding sections as needed. And we're never going to um, push those guidelines to the point where um, where we feel the kids are not getting um, the right uh, proportion of attention from the, from the teachers. And I also think that if we have these five hundred families moving into town, as Tony said, um, and they have uh, younger than school-aged children, that we really ought to think about increasing the pipeline of pre-K um, in Weston so that we can, you know, move those children into Hurlbut and through our system.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Gordon.
Very important question. Uh, I'll, I'll put it on Tony's comments. I like that he got to the bottom line on deciphering uh, the superintendent's uh, presentation about enrollment trends and trajectories. It, it was kind of hard to follow. And I think moving forward, the Board should uh, really consider maybe creating a different graphic, a different way of explaining uh, cause and effect projections. And that's what I do every day with my uh, my investors, my B C's and my engineers. Uh, more nuts and bolts, you know, I think we really want to find creative ways of bringing more, bring more kids into the district. I had a great conversation with Eric Nyquist. Yes, he has open choice. I think that should be really examined. I think uh, it has benefits but pitfalls, but you have a chance to really look at that as an opportunity for diversity, an opportunity for cash flow, an opportunity to bring uh, kids in K through twelve, pre-K through twelve that's offered. The state, I think, is looking at the funding mechanism for that. And I think, given A, we have a trajectory, a better trajectory. B, we have kids, we can go to C, which is keeping Hartford from scrutinizing us about the middle school. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Uh, next question. We will start with. Hmm, let's move it, let's move around a little bit. Let's start with Mr. Felton this time. What Connecticut's um, state political issue concerns you the most when it comes to Weston? How will you influence and address the issue?
Yeah, it, I, I think it, it ties together with some of the other answers I've given. What concerns me the most about Hartford is this one-size-fits-all approach. Hartford um, is not entirely representative of Weston. And each of the towns that uh, operate schools have uniqueness within the district, whether it's the students, the educators or the curriculum. So my biggest concern as a Board of Ed member is that we are advocating and championing for what's best for Weston. And we're somewhat limited in what we can do, because Hartford will uh, make mandates that we have to follow. Hartford funds us. And so we can't just do our own thing. But what we need to do as a Board of Education is, as I said, uh, in response to an earlier question, is we have to understand what the parents want and what the parents feel are most important to their children who we're educating. And then we have to determine what we are able to do within the confines of Hartford and what we may have to advocate for in Hartford to best represent our students. So I see the biggest issue from Hartford is them not allowing us to be local, allow, not allowing us to be Weston. And being Weston is not a bad thing.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Ms. Kingsley.
Um, I think that the biggest impact on Weston from uh, external politics into our town is really more of the outcome it has on our communication and discourse. I think that- I think that sometimes we get so wrapped up in these issues and we lose our civility and we lose our ability to communicate with one another. And that risks tearing apart what the fabric of makes us all Weston. Part of being in this small community is knowing your neighbor and, and working together. And I really think that the most important thing that we can do is to not lose sight of that, especially when the issues are really truly near and dear to our heart. And in the board of education, these are our children, that's everything. So I think that we just really need to take a deep breath and remember that we're all in this together and we all want the same outcome. We all really want the best for our kids, for our community and for our town.
Mr. Gordon.
Thank you again. Right, so we'll, we'll circle back to some earlier comments. I think of all of us cumulatively made. You know, we really want to create a bulwark against sort of intrusive, oversized, sort of outside influences that don't benefit our town and our students optimally, right? So we've talked about school busing, we've talked about attendance, we've talked about curriculum. Ultimately, you know, again, we have collective wisdom here and I think locally we can make good decisions for ourselves. So again, maybe to keep Hartford politics from distracting us from the core mission of the school district, which was enunciated by the superintendent at Kiwanis. Her number one objective is math is for the kids, that's K through 12. So maybe, I mean, not to be flippant, but maybe on November 3rd, we take all the political signs down and we put up math matters signs up and then everyone gets the message in town. That's what we're emphasizing for our kids. That's what's most important. We'll take the politics out of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pesco.
Peter, I love that idea. Math matters. I absolutely love that. We definitely should do that on, on November 3rd. I think that's a sign of unity and I think a much needed sign of unity. I think the board and the administration has a huge amount of power in Weston to drive our educational initiatives. And I think that unfortunately or fortunately, at the end of this term, we have no one else to blame but ourselves if we don't get things done, right? I do think we have the power to do what we need to do. I do think Hartford falls short in terms of not really providing a platform for all of our surrounding towns to come together and figure out a joint solution around big issues around unfunded mandates, sharing of services, and, and all of those things that I think without a higher body coming together, it's very, very hard for us to do it on our own. And I think that's where Hartford has really fallen, fallen short.
Thank you. Ms. Miller.
I agree completely with what my colleagues have said. I think I won't go on, but Tony's point about Hartford falling short on things like shared resources and the communities coming together is, is critical. I, I think that we ought to appreciate what Hartford brings only in terms of the time and money they can put into the research and expertise they can bring down if, if they can. But I, I think that we as a community, not just the school board, but the school board and the town need to think of ourselves as operating under a real asset-based community development philosophy, which means what do we have here? What have we got that works? What have we got that makes us powerful and smart? And what are our greatest assets and how do we build on those? And I think that that, along with having that very conversation with our surrounding communities, makes us an incredibly strong district and that we, as Tony said, have the power to make good decisions on our own behalf.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on, I'm going to take one of the questions that is being asked in the Q and A since we have some more time before we go to closing statements. This is from a parent, we as parents desire academic excellence in the schools. As some colleges and universities move away from standardized testing for admissions, how would that excellence be measured? What should be emphasized in the curriculum to give our students the best chance to succeed? I think the first part of that question is probably the one, and you can answer either one, there's two parts. But if we move away from standardized testing, how do we, how do we measure excellence in our schools? And this one, the first time, we're going to go with Mr. Pesco first this time.
Sure. We've, we've known for a few years now that, that colleges are really moving, moving more and more away from, from standardized testing. The first thing that we've done is, is really strengthened our guidance department in high school. They are a world-class guidance department who understands exactly what colleges are looking for and, and spend a huge amount of time working with our students and making sure they're prepared and consistent with what schools are looking for. As I think the second part of that question really relates to academic outcomes as, as evidenced by testing scores, which are not the standardized testings, but, but the testings that happen along the way from K to 12. And I think we need to focus on, on very high standards and to make sure those goals are met. So the students, by the time they get to high school, are actually prepared for the rigor that our high school actually demands. But, but I think at the end of the day, it's really the guidance that our high school students are getting from, again, what I think is a world-class guidance department, really shepherds us students very well through what colleges are expecting today and also have a really good visibility on where colleges are going to in the future and making sure that our high school students are well-prepared for that.
Okay, Mr. Felton.
So I think that the move away from standardized tests are sort of a, a double-edged sword, right? I don't, I think most parents would agree standardized tests don't necessarily show the preparedness of a student to go to college. It shows their ability to answer questions that they've studied for or have been coached on. It's not necessarily an indication of who they're going to become or what they can accomplish in college. So I, I mostly agree with what Tony said, which is that what we have to do is the college admissions process changes or evolves. We have to look at what can we do to prepare our students for college? And guidance is, I think, one of the best areas that we can focus on because they're going to know what the schools are looking for. They're going to know the student on a personal level beyond their ability to take the test and, and provide the correct answers. So I think it's going to evolve. I think it's dynamic at the moment. I think standardized testing to some extent will have to continue because you do need some sort of baseline. But I think using the guidance process within the high school is going to be the best tool that we have to prepare our students for college.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Kingsley.
I actually think that, you know, moving away from standardized testing is going to be a great way for Weston to shine even brighter. I mean, there is so much we do in the district that isn't captured on a test. We have so many course offerings, so many clubs, so many opportunities for leadership, so many sports teams, so many areas where the children do so much great work that isn't measured on one of those types of tests. So one of the things that the high school is moving towards is creating a portfolio of a graduate, a portrait of a graduate, which is basically a portfolio file where they can showcase some of the best pieces of all of the work they do through all of their years of school. And what a great way for them to not only reflect on all of the things they've accomplished, but also put together something to be able to show colleges that fully encompasses who they are and is self-directed by them and also is a reflection of the opportunities that are provided in the Weston School District.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Gordon.
Thank you again. Yeah, so I studied the 2020 NWEA MAP Growth Normative Interpolations, right? And we, we see that as residents about standardized test scores. And, you know, informally, it, it's like a STEM education itself, right? I mean, I have to figure out means and standard deviations just to track, you know, a test score. So it has its benefits, but it's like, I think it makes its case for where I've been all, all discussion. It's like a STEM exercise. So I, I like to, I like to embolden our teachers. I like to enable the pathways program throughout the high school to expand. I think that's great. I color-coded, I understood it. Science, I'm an environmental god. Literature, if I, like Bernie said, if I had to write a self-portrait of me as a high school student, I would read Joyce's, you know, Portrait of an Artist as a Young Man, just to figure out how to do some self-examination. So we have lots of opportunities to, to use our scoring method as a STEM and to add a great elements to the pathways program for the high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Miller.
I think we need to not only prepare our kids for college, but for life. And I don't think the standardized tests did anything to support that. What, as Tony said, our guidance program, our kids need to become incredible writers in every, whether they're STEM kids or, or college professors, or they're working in, in technology. They need to be amazing writers. They also need to be problem solvers and they need to be intuitive thinkers. And what we are offering at the school is this holistic way of, of helping the, every single student become multi-talented, confident and intuitive in their thinking. The, the mission for us to help them become global citizens is a critical part of how colleges look at students. Can they tell a good story? Can they vision for the future? Can they write? Can they problem solve? That's what we're doing to provide them with all the tools they need to get into college and beyond.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think we have time for one last question. Mr. Gordon, you can go first on this question. This is from the audience. The non-lapsing account that was just approved was over a million dollars. What is the BOE's role in keeping taxes in check? Mr. Gordon, you first.
Thank you. So that, that's the fundamental role of the board is to do share responsibility, looking at the budget items line by line. So I did talk about the non-lapsing count. I, I agree with the methodology. As I said, I thought it could be better communicated, but the end result is sound. So I'm going to go back to slide 57 of the 74 slide deck and look at teachers' salaries and benefits. Seventy-eight percent of our budget is dedicated to that. And question A is, is that comparable to our neighboring school districts, right? It's allow, I think we're allowed to see, are we overpaying, underpaying or right paying our, our great staff and examine where we sit comparably to other districts. And then we have to ask ourselves a really hard thought question, a contingency. Let's say the EDA comes down at we only have $51 million to spend, not $56 million to spend. I don't know where it comes down, but it comes down. How do we adjust that $56 million? Do we take $5 million out of salaries and benefits? And then it's, and maintain the same 78%? Or do we have to shuffle the money around and look at the percentages? So I think one of the roles of the board is contingency planning, is asking ourselves collectively the hard questions, right? Because there's going to be a moment that we have to have a plan of action, we have to have a mechanism and a rationale and communicate that along with the superintendent to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pesco.
First of all, the $1 million non-lapse account was not approved by the Board of Finance at the last meeting. That money will, that surplus will actually go back into the town's general fund. So that, I just want to clarify that, that point. Secondly, the, the board's responsibility with respect, I mean, one of the two major board responsibilities, the first one is, is hiring the superintendent, the second one is the budget. We need to make sure that we allocate our budgets consistent to what the priorities and goals are for the district and make sure that we spend no more than we have to. And before we go to the taxpayer payers, I think what Peter was alluding to is, is that we look at creating internal capacity before we ask the taxpayers for another dollar, right? So the combination of focusing our dollars on our priorities, making sure that we don't spend any more than we have to and making sure that we've really looked internally to create capacity before we go back to the taxpayers.
Thank you. Ms. Kingsley.
I think that the most important thing that we can do as the board of education is not to be complacent in the process that we've been using and to continually put in the time and the effort to start from zero and reevaluate everything we do every single year. And I know that, that's something the board of education has done and in speaking to the members today. It's something that we all sign up to want to do and work on. I think we're open to exploring shared resources. We're open to exploring sustainability. We're open to getting multiple bids for any kind of thing we need to process and also just coming up with creative financial solutions that really maximize the money that we spend so we can get maximum educational output for every single dollar that we, we use.
Thank you. Mr. Felton.
So I, I think in a town like ours where 78% of our budget goes to the schools, the Board of Ed does play a role in trying to stretch every dollar we have. But when we consider that 78% of our budget is for the schools, people move to the town for the schools. So I think what the Board of Ed is responsible for is to make sure that we are getting the most we can out of every dollar we spend and that we don't spend money where we don't have to. And I think that's one of the areas that the Board of Ed is going to continue to look at is to ensure that we're spent, we're, we're being fiscally conservative, but not at the expense of eroding the quality education that Weston provides.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Miller.
I think that taxpayers should know that, you know, while, while the budget is, is, is that, that we protect, our role is to protect the magic that happens between teachers and students in the classroom. And that if 78 to 85% of our budget is about that piece, about what happens for our children, the reason they moved here, high education standards, that we're not going to play with that. And personally, on the, on the board, I work very hard to protect that relationship and that magic that happens in the classroom when we're in budget discussions. I'm very happy to be creative in other ways, in other parts of the budget. But I think a multi-year budget that projects out and protects the teacher-child relationship and anything that comes close to that center circle in a series of concentric circles, we will protect. Because that's why people move to this town. And that's what we, as a board, are responsible for ensuring happens is we continue to provide excellence in education and we shouldn't let the budget touch that inner circle.
Okay, thank you. Now we're on to closing statements. Back to the original order. Mr. Gordon, you can go first. You have two minutes.
Thank you very much, Laura, for moderating today and the League of Women Voters for conducting a very, a good tough discussion, very, very informative, very insightful. So I have a pretty, pretty short statement. So, you know, I, I clearly come from a, I come from the semiconductor industry. You know, I raise money, I, I sell companies, I manage products globally. I do a lot of communication, I give webinar. So I, I like the idea of the board communicating better. I think that's, that's part and parcel with engaging our public. And, you know, also have been a teacher in my life. I, I taught sixth grade math as a substitute teacher. And I actually taught skiing, but I taught adaptive skiing. So I won an award once for creative ways of teaching blind kids how to ski in trees, of all things. So it's a very interesting combination of truly understanding, engaging children on education and sort of the hard-nosed reality of managing budgets, managing tough decisions among professionals and communicating that concisely, bottom-line stuff to the public that demands that professionalism and capability of a board. So in our closing thoughts, you know, a good sentiment today is that we're working together and there's a great play. And I know the fourth graders are excited because they get this thing with the high school kids. It's called All Together Now. So I think that's a good sentiment to lead with. November 13th, 14th, tickets go on sale. We'd like to see everyone buy a ticket and support our kids in their All Together Now performance. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you. Ms. Miller.
Thank you. Yeah, this has been enjoyable. You know, listen, we're coming out the other end of some of the hardest years Weston's faced in decades, let's just say it. I'm very optimistic about the future. But in some ways Weston is more politically and socially divided than it's been in the past. We had a highly charged political climate across the country and, you know, COVID brought about isolation fear. And I would say that Westonites are really hungry for peace and we're hungry for collaborative progress. We need to raise up our greatest assets, our people, our natural surroundings and our potential for growth and creativity. We need to identify and celebrate our common ground and we as a board, I think, can lead in that respect.
And we, as a board, I think can lead in that respect. I am renewing my longstanding commitment to the board, running again, because our children and our staff, frankly, I think are the greatest asset in this town and I want to work for them. We have extraordinary talent in our schools. And though we are a very high-performing district, we cannot take that for granted. We need to lead. We need to be vigilant in our ability to constantly assess what's working well and where we need improvement. We need to push ourselves to think about the children's future roles, as I said earlier, as global citizens. And it begins with curiosity and inspiration and joy for every single one of them every day. That is our priority. I bring 25 years of education experience, mostly in the field of early childhood education, which is really when our children lay down the foundation for their lives and get their most important head start. And with their families and in our schools, right here in Weston, they're in good hands. So let's give them our very, very best. Thank you.
Mr. Felton.
Thank you. So, you know, I joined the Board of Ed after several years of listening and watching from the sidelines because I have a vested interest in our schools continuing to provide the excellent education. That was the reason I moved to Weston. I have a child who's now in the eighth grade, who started out in Weston Public Schools through the Early Learning Center. It was a phenomenal experience and it highlighted and really proved to us what Weston schools and Weston small communities about. And I have a child who just entered the first grade. And one of the areas that I thought I could bring some positive change to the Board of Education is in the area of communication. I feel that that's an area that in the short time that I've been on the board, working with all the other members of the board, have already made some changes. The board has on occasion been accused of being completely deaf to the community. And once I was, before I was on the board, I understood that perception. And then once I was on the board, I wasn't at that point as, I, I wasn't convinced at that point that the board wasn't listening to the community. But what I did see is that the board didn't do a proactive job at reaching out to the community. So that's an area that was especially interesting to me to join the board, was to make sure that all the hard work that all seven members do is shared with the community often and accurately, so that our community members who elect us to these positions to have the best interests of their children and their family in mind, have a chance to understand how we make decisions. And more importantly, we have a chance to understand what they want from us. I would prefer to be criticized than to be congratulated because with criticism, I can learn. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Pesco.
Well, thank you, Laura, and the League of Women Voters for, for everything you do to make sure that the public is informed and knows about the candidates and, and about their perspectives and, and their views as we get to Election Day. A little bit about myself, I'm, I'm the current Chair of the Board and has served on the board for four years. I lived with my family here in Weston for 28 years and my two grown children grew up in Weston, just a wonderful town that we love. And we're committed to staying here for, for the long term. My background, I retired five years ago. I have 25 years in financial services. I have a PhD in chemical engineering and was a research scientist before went into finance. And quite frankly, over the last four years, it's been a privilege to serve with my colleagues on the board. All come with accomplished backgrounds, different perspectives, and we all come together to, to serve the community and the children. What have we done during this term? Over the last four years, we've navigated through what was a real challenging set of events and challenges in COVID. Spent countless hours making sure that we navigated with the administration, that we navigated all of the challenges of COVID. During this time, we embarked on a national search for a superintendent. And we're so excited to be working with Lisa Wallach, who has dedicated a career to the children here at Weston. We've initiated a study of our facilities that led to the creation of the town Facilities Optimization Committee to look at the much-needed upgrade of all our towns and school facilities. And we delivered a number of budgets, the last two budgets, which were 2% and 1.7%, which was lower than the, the five-year average. And returned a surplus of 1.2 million to the town this year. What do we need to do in the next term? We need to focus on the post-COVID re-entry of our children to our schools to make sure their emotional and social needs are addressed. We need to focus on high goals for math and language arts and make sure those goals are achieved. And we need to basically complete the work on facilities to make sure that we have a trajectory for upgrading our, our town and especially our school facilities in the future. You know, Weston is rooted in education. Just one second and, and I'll, I'll end. And it, it's, like I said, it's been an incredible privilege to serve on the board and as board chair and to have an incredible set of board members who all are very like-minded in that we're here to serve our children. And I'm excited and looking forward to another four years on the, on the board. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kingsley. You have the last word.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and thank you, Laura, for moderating and giving us the opportunity to be here today. I would like to share a little bit about my background. I was a high school science teacher, bio and AP bio for a decade. And I recently compete, completed my doctorate in educational leadership with a research focus on well-being in schools. I've been a resident of Weston for four and a half years and I have two children in the Weston Public Schools, a first grader and a fourth grader. So I'm in it for the long haul. And I'm running for the Board of Education because I truly love our town and I welcome the opportunity to use any knowledge and skills that I have to be able to support our community and support our children. With your support on November 2nd, I look forward to working with this intelligent and talented board to nurture a thriving and inclusive school community and bring out the best we can in Weston. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for participating today. We really appreciate your taking the time to inform the Weston voters of who you are, what you stand for and why you're running. It's been a really great program and I appreciate all of the civility that has been demonstrated here. We're going to take a break now. I'm going to do a little plug for League Women Voters. I hope that if you enjoyed this debate forum, actually, that you will think about joining the League. The League is responsible for a lot of educating of voters and we register voters. And we want to talk about issues in a nonpartisan way, which is something that we are really proud of. And we really feel that it adds to the community to talk about the issues without being bipartisan. And everybody seemed very congenial today and that's terrific. Reflects, a great reflection on Weston as a community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I think we're back. So here we are again. This is, Helen, do you want to go in and chime in? Do your little thing since we might be having people that were not here at the beginning at the Board of Ed?
Can I ask you a question, Laura?
Sure, Steve.
You cannot start your video because the host has disabled it.
Oh, that's what.
I have the same problem.
All right, so.
There you go. Thank you.
Cole's bringing everybody back online.
Great, thank you very much.
And Laura, if you can hear me, I had not planned to say something further, though there the larger difference now in, in time from this one. But if you'll just make a general statement and encourage people to go to the website, which Cole had put up, that'd be great.
Okay. Welcome to the, I'm going to start the, my name is Laura Smith. I'm the moderator for today's debate. I'm also the president of League Women Voters of Connecticut, as well as a Norwalk co-convenor for the Norwalk League. I'm a former resident of Connecticut where I lived for almost over 20 years as a member of the Weston League of Women Voters, as well as the Board of Education. Okay, we're going to start today by basically laying out some of the rules. Before we got on, there was a, you know, kind of a lottery for positions who will get the question. Each of the candidates, we have six candidates with us today. Each candidate will get a question and answer, get a chance to answer the question first. We'll have a minute and a half to respond. And then every other person will have a minute to respond to that same question. We have a lot of questions. Hopefully we'll get to all of them. And if there are more, we can get to those two as time allows. Each candidate will get a two-minute closing statements at the end of the debate. And I think that's about it. So is everybody ready? And I think that's about it. So is everybody ready? Everyone is here. Candidates, I will go through the list. Mr. Ezzy, Steve Ezzy's Democratic candidate. Michael Ember, Democratic candidate. Rhone Baldwin, Republican candidate. Travis Worrell, independent candidate. Jeffrey Farr, Republican candidate, and Jamie Zeppernick, Republican candidate. Thank you all for being here today. The first question will go to Mr. Ezzy. Section 9.4 of the Town Charter. Gives the BOF members the sole responsibility to review the BoE budget prior to the ATBM and referendum. Considering that the school budget is approximately 80% of the tax bill, is there a way to cut overall tax bills for Weston residents?
I'm sorry, is that for me?
That's for you.
Okay, great.
Lucky guy.
Yeah, there.
Get to start us off.
There we go. Well, thanks for that question. The Board of Education budget is 80 some odd percent of the overall town budget. And the Board of Education budget is primarily almost 85% personnel costs. And about 15% non-personnel costs. So the only way to impact the overall education budget is to effectively reduce teachers and support people. And that, and I think it needs to be understood, we do not control as the Board of Finance how the Board of Education spends their budget. The process is that the, that the Board of Education presents to the Board of Selectmen and to the Board of Finance. Their budget in detail. Both groups review it, the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. We then vote on a budget overall. And that budget is then passed or rejected, but it's passed, and the Board of Education is then given a number. Last year was, or this current year was $55 million. And they then can spend that, those funds in any manner that they choose. We can only reduce their budget by reducing a number, not a particular line item, and I think that needs to be understood. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Ember, same question to you.
I'll echo what Steve said about the education budget. Certainly, we're always happy to consult with the Board of Education about some potential strategies for reducing. But the real influence that the Board of Finance is going to have on creating capacity is finding ways of reducing expenses that are not Board of Education governed, and we're going to be on the lookout for that. And I'm sure this is going to come up later in the debate, but over the next couple of years, we're going to be paying off a substantial amount of our debt. It's going to free up debt service capacity. And there is opportunity in that capacity to create tax cuts, but at the same time, we also have a lot of capital expenditures facing us. So there's going to have to be some balancing done.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Baldwin.
Well, I think one of the key goals of the Board of Finance is to make sure that we continue to moderate town spending taxes in our mill rate. And clearly, with the Board of Ed accounting for 80% of the budget, there's got to be a big focus on that. But at the same time, making sure that we sustain excellent schools, which is a key priority for Weston at the same time. I think the fact that we've kept the Board of Ed increases to much lower levels over the last two years compared to previous years is evidence that we're starting to see some improvement with respect to how the Board of Finance is working for the Board of Ed on these issues. And I think those emerge from a better sharing of fiscal goals across the Board of Ed, the Board of Finance, and the Board of Selectmen. And making sure that people see the impact of what a 2%, a 1%, a 3% increase in spending is in terms of our long-term mill rate and tax rate. And I think that we can continue to get better at doing that, and we'll see continued sort of hopefully progress with this collaboration across our boards.
Thank you. Mr. Worrell.
Hi, and thank you for having me on this debate today. Appreciate all the time you're taking out, especially those watching and taking time out of their busy Saturday to see what we have to say. As Mr. Ezzy said, the budget is primarily on staffing, teachers, and support staff, and those type of items. The way to reduce that can only be seen in possibly reducing the facilities, which then would reduce the support staff and would reduce that line item for the budgets, which is something that is going to be talked about in the future. We have deteriorating infrastructure of our schools. We either have to renovate, or we have to condense them, possibly back into a three-school system. That might be up for the Board of Ed to figure out how to do, but to just say that we'd be cutting teachers and messing with our child's, kids' education by reducing that budget, I think is a falsity, and it's a false dichotomy. I think there's only one way to go about that.
Thank you, Mr. Farr.
Yes, good morning. First of all, thanks to the League of Women Voters for setting up this Board of Finance candidate debate, and also thank you to members of the community for taking time out to view it now or at some time in the future. The fact that the, the school board has the major responsibility of managing the monies that are allocated to them each year by the town is, is a very important fact here. As Steve Ezzy has already stated, we can give a dollar figure, but we cannot dictate how the school board can spend its money. It's still up to the school board to figure that out. On a, on a go-forward basis, I will continue to collaborate or to advocate for looking for productivity increases in the schools' operations and a more prudent approach to maintaining school facilities. Thank you.
Mr. Zeppernick.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for the League of Women Voters for hosting the event tonight. It's, it's great to be on here, and I also want to thank the people of Weston who are joining us today. And, and again, if you are planning on watching later, I think I'd just like to echo the sentiments of the other candidates and board, current board members here. You know, the, the schools are the main reason why people move into Weston. Weston is, is a large community based and made up of families. Understanding, understanding that first is essential in understanding how we need to maintain the excellence of the schools, the excellence of the facilities, the buildings, and our overall understanding of how we can continue to improve into the future. I don't, I don't see that the communication between the, the boards is as good as it could be, and one of my goals is to in, increase that level of communication across the boards to, to make that, that a better way that we can ensure that we're moving forward responsibly.
Okay, thank you. The next question is for Mr. Ember first. Which do you believe, excuse me, I have a thing. Which do you believe is the best timeline to prepare forecasts for the town of Weston? Long-term or short-term financial planning?
Absolutely long-term. The idea of lurching from one year's budget to the next without thinking about the long-term impact of decisions being made today is just bad fiscal management. We should be thinking in terms of minimum five-year financial forecasting. And there are some models floating around in Town Hall that I hope in the next few months be able to sit down with Rick Darling and think about ways of improving our forecasting capability so that we can do dynamic, what-if scenario building. If we do this, what's going to be the long-term impact if we invest in a piece of infrastructure? What are we going to have to spend on maintenance? All these things that really will force us to be disciplined about how are we going to budget all these other items such that we can hold down our mill rate. Absolutely long-term. Think about the next generation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Zeppernick, you may go next.
Thank you. Yeah, I, again, what, what, what is important here is the long-term. And, and as Mr. Ember just, just stated, we need to really focus on the future generations of Weston. We all know how great this town is. We want to keep it that way. So the, the fiscally responsible thing to do as a Board of Finance member is to ensure that we are definitely looking into the future. Planning for that future is imperative. We all have seen what's, what COVID has brought us in, in the past year. We were able to be nimble during that time within the school district. Going back to understanding that there are going to be needs that come up, having that long-term view will allow us to really be able to be nimble and enact, enact a policy where, where it's needed and when it's needed.
Okay, Mr. Worrell.
Thank you. I feel that with our town budgeting process, there should be in place a three-year operating plan, which we should definitely sit down, should I make it on the board to figure out, although you can't fix the budget for next year or decide the budget ahead of time for the year in advance, you could at least have a plan on paper. And you could back things out to realize what you can actually afford the next year, the years after. I think that's a big problem that we haven't been able to foresee the future in Weston and how things, change of events happen just randomly without our, our knowing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Farr.
The, I certainly do agree with, everything has been said in terms of looking at the longer term. However, we also need to have the capability to see what short-term situations and opportunities that, you know, present themselves to us as to how, how we're going to proceed. So for example, we just recently got an opportunity to, to sell the Strassler-Framson part, parcel of 85 acres. That is monies that we need to judiciously use on a go-forward basis, and it'll give us some opportunities to plug some holes in some other areas. Things like that, that we need to stay flexi, flexible around, but with, with an overall guideline as to, you know, longer-term finance. Thank you.
Mr. Mr. Ezzy's.
Thanks. Just, just so everyone knows, we do do long-term forecasts. I have three of them right here in front of me. One by the town, and thanks to Jeff Farr, he's taken it upon himself to, to model out a few, a few cases. A base case, an increase at 2% and an increase of 3%. So we do do long-term modeling. Is it perfect? Probably not. Can it be refined? The answer to that is yes. But to Jeff's earlier comment, we also need, we also need to be cognizant of the future. These are just spreadsheet numbers of what will happen if we, if, if the, if the budget goes up by some percentage, and where can we spend money? And where's that money going to come from? But on a near-term basis, we have to be prepared for the unexpected. Luckily, we have a well-funded town. But there are many calls on that capital, but we do do, we do do long-term funding out to, or long-term modeling out to 2030, 31, the 2020, 31 fiscal budget.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Baldwin.
Yeah, I think your question was, which should we do, short-term or long-term budgeting? And I think the answer is yes. Clearly, we, we have been doing, and we need to continue to increase the emphasis on our long-term view for our budget. And we need to share that more across the other boards so they can then, then again, see the context that we need to operate in or what the view is long-term and continue to visit that. But at the same time, we have to make sure that our short-term budgets are within that same kind of long-term view, and that we hold people accountable for meeting those short-term budgets.
Okay, thank you. The next question is also for you, Mr. Baldwin. You can start this question. Has the pandemic affected how the Finance Board operates? And if so, how has the role changed over the past year?
I think the pandemic has sort of highlighted in what, what I think is some of the strengths in which the Board of Finance has traditionally operated. And I said this at the debate in 2017, when I was first running for election to the Board of Finance, that it is, in my opinion, composed of people that act in a very bipartisan fashion for the best interests of our town, and that if you don't know the faces that are behind the comments, it's hard to tell who's a Republican or who's a Democrat. And on any one view, people are going to take different positions depending on what they thinks right for the town. And I think the fact that we were able to navigate, and I think we should say this, the COVID situation financially extraordinarily well is because of that same kind of modus operandi in terms of way people have operated on, on the Board of Finance. We came together in a way that considered the risks to the town and charted a path that I think has resulted in the town emerging and stronger financially than, than it was before, and in a very good position to be able to take advantage of now. A number of things that are presenting themselves as we look out with the influx of new families into our town, the improvement in property valuations. And we're closer now to the payoff of our debt and the reduction of, of debt service charges as a result of that. We're emerging in, in very good shape and now able to take advantage of that to deal with challenges and opportunities that we have as a town.
Thank you. Mr. Farr.
Yes, it was, it was challenging to work in, you know, in passing this last two budgets with the pandemic. There were a lot of unknowns. I think that as a board, though, we really came together and made good decisions around what we could afford and what we needed to sort of keep our powder dry for the unknowns. And we did that successfully. And as, as Rhone says, we, we now have a situation where we are fiscally stronger than, than we, you know, had, had originally expected we would be. And that opens up some opportunities for addressing some things that, you know, were, were purposely, you know, sort of put to the side to make sure that we got through the pandemic.
Thank you, Mr. Worrell.
I feel that the pandemic definitely changed the way any boards operate in our town, especially through this mode of Zoom that we're in right now. It's kind of really tough to, to see all your, your colleagues in one place and really feel how they're feeling, and you're kind of hiding behind a computer screen. Takes a lot of the personality away from the whole situation. I do feel that COVID actually helped the town finances in the situation that things went before COVID. I think the town was in dire financial straits, and I think that because of things that may have been put off or ways in which COVID has, has definitely helped us out, not as a health issue, but as a financial issue for the town to keep moving.
Thank you, Mr. Ember.
Um, I can't offer the perspective of how it's changed, how the board has changed the way it's operated as a function of, of the pandemic. I just joined two months ago to fill out the remaining term of Alan Graubert. But what I will say is that the pandemic should force the board and the rest of the town leaders to rethink, how do we deliver service? And how will our community change the way it works as a function of COVID and modify our service delivery as a function of that? And as someone who's observed a lot of fiscal distress across states and cities in my professional life, Weston has come through this very well. Our AAA credit rating is testament to that.
Mr. Zeppernick.
Yes, only having joined the board two months ago, I obviously wasn't around prior and not really involved clearly in any decision or policymaking. What I can say initially about the members of the board in the past two meetings that I have been in, I have, I haven't seen a more dedicated group of people who all have a very similar mindset on the health of Weston. Who have come together and, and really have a level of expertise that is, that is phenomenal. In, in my own business, dealing with COVID, I've faced many challenges working across three states. Managing 200 to 300 employees, working with families who I serve, up to 500, 600 families at a time. up to five hundred, six hundred families at a time across two different businesses. I I understand the challenges that we faced and being able to be flexible and to be nimble and to make make decisions that were based on remembering what it is that's most important behind the numbers. And that's always going to be the people that we serve and those in in Weston are the families.
Thank you. Mr. Essies.
Sure, I just need to correct something Travis just said. The town is not, was not, and has never been in dire financial conditions. That's just a incorrect statement. The pandemic, it's amazing that a calamity like like COVID could see a town like ours, or any town for that matter, or the overall economy come out in a much stronger manner. The the COVID environment as relates to this board, we have met more frequently. It's easier to meet, we get greater participation from the public, and so we've actually been more productive by being able to meet at any hour of the day, start our meetings earlier, and more people are participating. And I actually hope we can continue to meet in this some part of this fashion going forward. I just think it's turned out to be, and I think everyone in the in the business world has found a way to become even more productive in this Zoom rectangle environment that we've been living in for the past for the past couple of years.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on to the next question. And Mr. Raul, you are able to answer this question first. Is there a way to forecast how the next reevaluation will affect taxes for low, medium, and high valued homes? Will the top end of the market gain more than the low end, in your opinion?
In my opinion, there needs to be a reevaluation that affects all sizes and values of homes equally. And we definitely have to meet at a happy median. People with larger houses in town shouldn't be paying for the brunt of our kids' education and town facility maintenance and everything like that. Just because you have a smaller town and home, you should definitely not be paying the least out of anybody else. It's something that should be even across all boards, and I think that if we follow the reevaluation closely, we can definitely handle that the right way.
Thank you, Mr. Farr.
The fact of the matter is, we don't really have any control over how the revaluation is going to go. It's done by an outside agency. They will go through their their due diligence, look at recent sales and what have you, comparisons, and come up with a new appraisals for each household, you know, in the town. How how is that going to play out? We do not yet know. As some people may have noticed, appraisals of houses that have been sold are actually coming in lower than what the sales price was. So we don't know in in twenty twenty three how this is going to play out. What we do know is that in the last revaluation in twenty eighteen that as a result, a greater tax burden shifted from the top quartile of houses to the lower quartile of houses, the very houses that we depend on for families moving in with children to go into the school system, as well as for seniors to retire to and stay in town. Thank you.
Mr. Ember.
I'll echo what Jeff just said. There is no way to try and manipulate what our grand list is going to look like on the next revaluation. And I think when we start going down the path of should the mill rate be different for larger homes versus smaller homes, as Mr. Raul may have been suggesting, I think that is a slippery dangerous slope, and I would not be an advocate for that. We are highly dependent, like every other town in Connecticut, on property taxes, the main source of our revenue. And the smart thing for a board of finance to do is just keep track of where our spending is, invest wisely in infrastructure, and stay on top of deferred maintenance so it doesn't get out of hand.
Excuse me, Mr. Baldwin.
Well, as people have said, we we don't know exactly. It'll depend on the valuations as of October first, twenty twenty three, and that's still a ways off with respect to that. But I have to say that, and I credit Jeff Farr with this, Jeff is one has been tracking property valuations, and it's something that we discuss regularly at the Board of Finance, just looking at sales in comparison to what we have at the grand list. So we are monitoring the at least the trends more closely. And if you look at what that suggests is that overall property valuations compared to to the last revow are up ten to twenty percent or so. So that's encouraging. Again, we'll see what property valuations do between now and the next time. And we've seen over the past six months higher end sales happening, which shows that hopefully we're seeing some valuation recovery in the the higher end homes. So again, that's the status of the data and the status today. That doesn't mean that's going to be the situation in twenty twenty three, but at least it's encouraging compared to what we've seen in in previous valuations.
Thank you, Mr. Zepneric.
Yes, over the past two months, I really have been receiving a kind of crash course on the property valuations with the help of with with the help of Jeff and Ron, Steve as well. The the documentation on this is is astounding. And and I think again, what what the other members have said here, you know, once the outside agency comes in and gives the appraisals for the households, we'll we'll have a better idea that we don't have much in the way of influencing that. The the property taxes moving forward, it sounds as if we can maintain and also ensure that we are keeping an eye on those so that we can, if we can, keep those taxes in in a lower bracket across the board. But we won't have any way of knowing that until the until the appraisals come in.
Thank you, Mr. Essies.
Yeah, I echo. You know, my thanks to Jeff. Jeff has been Jeff has tracked every home sale by sale price, assessment value, and market value and the difference since the beginning of of this fiscal year, and it's been great. Just to put this in perspective, at the beginning of the pandemic, a lot of homes were being sold for below their assessed value. That's kind of turned around. So there during this during the fiscal twenty 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 one fiscal year, three hundred and sixty six homes were sold, two seventy one above market value, ninety five below, and fourteen below the assessed value. We brought in close to a million dollars of increased of new conveyance fees as a result of that. And you know, by Jeff's calculation, through June, at least, I think the grand list will increase by thirty plus million dollars. We will see where that comes in. Right now, the higher end homes are are just starting or in the last couple of months, starting to see an increase in value. But it's something we track and we track quite closely. Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, Mr. Farr, you have this question is for you first. How can the finance board help to increase the town of Weston's grand list?
Well, couple of things which which it really is up to developers, whether or not they're able to build new homes. And that sort of falls into the the planning and zoning's court. You know, approving lot development plans. Potent and I know they're currently discussing whether or not to turn the town, village district into a commercial zone, which would be possibility of of increasing the grand list. I think it's really important here to understand the relationship. While we can all have house assessments go up with a new revaluation, if our spending is continues on the same track it is, we're all going to end up still paying the same amount of taxes. So it's not real growth to get our valuations for existing homes up. We really need real growth in the grand list. And like to see that through, again, opportunities to build out, you know, rebuilding some homes, perhaps getting some commercial operations into town, but again, those can only be done in the context of achieving water and septic accommodations. You know, going forward.
Thank you, Mr. Essies.
The only way to affect the grand list in any meaningful manner is to have an increase in in property taxes associated with homes. We can't build enough commercial space, nor will we want to build enough commercial space to have a to have it to have an increase in our property tax revenues. You know, Weston receives about ninety one or ninety two percent of their total rep property tax revenues from, you know, from our homes. It puts us towards the higher end of the state. You compare that to a more populous place like Hartford where it's about forty percent. The only way to increase the grand list is to increase the value of people's homes in town.
Mr. Zepneric.
Yes, the the grand list, I think, as as Steve just mentioned, the 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 overall ability to increase that is really based on on the property tax. We have, as you said, ninety percent of our revenues come from that. So i- increasing that is is obviously something that must be continually watched and and making sure that we don't go too far in 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 overtaxing, and I think that's obviously a main concern of the the people of Weston. So the the board really has a good handle on this, and I think that we can maintain what we're seeing and how we can continue to monitor that situation as we need to.
Thank you, Mr. Raul.
I don't think we need to increase the grand list. I seriously think we need to focus on lowering the mill rate. And that could generally help all the taxpayers in what they're currently paying and what they will pay in the future, and that might be with some reductions. That's not unheard of. We might have to get back down to earth and figure out where the money is being spent, but just increasing the value of people's homes without adding new taxable units around to increase the grand list, I don't think is the right idea.
Thank you, Mr. Ember.
I think it's important for everybody to recognize that we talk about the Board of Finance helping to drive the value of the grand list, that the Board of Finance has narrow parameters in which it can operate. So what are the real drivers of value of my home and your home? It's the quality of our schools. It's the quality of our roads, the quality of our infrastructure. So as far as the Board of Finance's ability to have an impact, it's doing a responsible job of managing our school budget and letting others decide how to drive that quality of education. But we have, we have to be the ones to decide how to finance it. We have to be the ones to decide on how to finance the infrastructure. And when it comes to economic development, that is the purview of the executive side of Town Hall. And I think we have to respect everybody's swim lanes and do what they're allowed to do. Grand list is about value.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
Yeah, I would just echo some of the thoughts that I think in the end, the Board of Finance role is to execute where it can to make Weston a continued and more attractive place for for people to move into and for people potentially develop. And to me, that's number one, making sure we maintain excellent schools and high quality town services. But two, we do that in a way that continues to moderate our town's spending and tax burden and and mill rate and maintain a strong balance sheet. So all that makes us an attractive town, which make more people want to come in, develop, raise the value of our properties, raise the value of of the grand list. But the other challenge I think we face is finding a way to continue to fund increasing needs for capital investments. People have spoken about paving roads. We've done more in that area recently. We've got to continue to sustain that. We have other needs that we're going to have to fund more going forward in the capital side for our town, for our schools. And that's going to be an essential part of continuing to make Weston an attractive place going forward. But we got to do it in a fiscally responsible way at the same time.
Okay, thank you. This may be our last question. We might be able to get another one in, but let's let's see if this might be our last question. And the first question this time goes to Mr. Zepneric. What Connecticut state political issue concerns you the most when it comes to Weston? And how will you influence and address that issue?
Thank you. Well, political issues are always going to arise throughout the state. What I think is more important is understanding that we need to come together and work together across party lines. Weston's made up of a diverse group of of people. And you know, while there are challenges out there, Weston has always proven to be an optimistic place to live. And there's there's always been a spirit of of working together in Weston. I I think that recently within the town, there has been there has been some consternation and some issues that have arisen that have have driven people apart. I I'd like to see that that aspect removed again from from Weston where you can go out on the baseball field and the soccer field and meet up with other parents of of different political stripe and enjoy a great conversation without without any, you know, excess baggage. Again, we've moved all all of us have moved to Weston for for many reasons, but once we've, once we've lived here for several years, we've seen, we've seen the ability of people to really get along. So I think that we need to get back to that base. I think that one thing that I will bring is again, a a level of communication, listening across across the boards and and listening to what's most important is, and and that's the residents of Weston. I think that that I I'm very capable of doing that, and I think that my ticket is very capable of doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Raul.
Can you just repeat the question so I'm clear on it?
Sure. What Connecticut state political issue concerns you the most when it comes to Weston? And how will you influence and address that issue?
So Hartford political issues, I know they affect us down the road, but one reason that I actually got rid of my political affiliation and decided to be unaffiliated is I don't want to be beholden to any serious political issues that are outside of the town of Weston. Everything in Weston is all local issues and shouldn't be beholden to Hartford. I understand they put down mandates and things like that that we have to try to navigate and figure out. But I think that I as an unaffiliated candidate, I can advocate to Hartford in a little better way and come for the Western voters and not just a political party.
Thank you, Mr. Essies.
That's a great question, and thanks for whomever asked that. So the political issue in Hartford as it relates to Weston is that the leadership in Hartford all come from large cities. And communities like Weston or Westport or Greenwich or basically Fairfield County are looked to as a cash box. So as an example, the funds we receive from Hartford have been declining year over year over year to the point now where we get about six percent of our revenues coming from the state of Connecticut. Our representatives, our representatives in Hartford have to speak for the needs of Weston. They have to obviously monitor what's necessary in the state. But we need strong voices representing Weston in Hartford from our state legislators, and so far, they've been very good at doing that. But it's the leadership that comes from the larger cities that's affecting communities like our own in Fairfield County. So we need strong leadership from our state legislators to help improve the amount of intergovernmental, intergovernmental revenues that we receive from the state.
Thank you, Mr. Farr.
So I I believe the the largest risk or challenge to to Western from the state is mandating affordable housing in our community that does not have sufficient infrastructure to support any kind of development in that respect. I have a long term view on this, having been in town for many years. And I have committed to work with our state legislators, either in an advisory capacity and certainly an advocate to make sure that we we do not have a situation where we are forced through through judicial rulings that we have to build, you know, X number of of affordable units.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
Well, I I think the the number one threat that we face is we're an affluent town, and so we're a target for potential ways to tap, like other affluent towns, to solve the issues of the state's financial challenges, as well as other towns or cities' financial challenges. And to be very specific, the number one threat that we face is that there's an initiative like there was. there's an initiative like there was four years ago to try to push down the unfunded teachers pension liability on the towns like ourselves. And Malloy had that proposal four years ago. It did not survive. We've had a respite because of the improvement, at least at this point, of the state's financial condition. But just to put that in perspective, that, and it's, you can see it in our, in our accounting statements, it's an $80 million contingent liability. So if there are initiatives by the state to do that, we could suddenly get hit with debt that we have to pay off that's in excess of the total amount of debt that this town has raised. So that's the broad theme, but specifically, I'd say, anything related to the teacher's pension liability should raise alarm bells by people in our town.
Thank you, Mr. Ember.
Just want to agree with both Steve and with Roan because there's linkage here that it's the massively underfunded pension liability at the state level that has led to the crowding out problem in the state budget. It has led to the reduction in aid that Weston receives. That to me is the single biggest political fiscal risk that Weston faces. What can we do about it? I've already done something about it. I proposed to the state a couple of years ago, an innovative solution to coming up with an alternative approach to funding the state pension. And as a consequence, Speaker Joe Arasimovitz created the Connecticut Pension Sustainability Commission, to which I was appointed. And we spent about a year evaluating an alternative method and made recommendations to the legislature. We're doing better as a state on pensions right now. We've had some good returns. They've done some accounting tricks that have stretched it out a little bit, but it still represents a serious threat.
Okay, all right. I think we're going to move on to closing statements. I'm going to kind of reverse the order a little bit. Mr. Zepperneck, you may go first, and you have two minutes for a closing statement.
Yes, thank you. Thank you again, town of Weston, everybody that's joined on today. I appreciate the time it's taking to come together and listen to these, these very important debates. And I also like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting the event. I, you know, I really think that Weston needs additional qualified and experienced leaders who really understand the importance of sound conservative fiscal policy and as well as having a fundamental knowledge of what, what's actually behind the numbers. And again, I've brought this up many times. For me, that's the families. In my capacity as a business owner, I am responsible for employees, but I am more importantly, responsible for serving the families. And for me, that's what guides, guides my principles and my philosophies. And I think it's important that we always, we always move forward in our, in our decision-making with that in mind. And, you know, on a personal level, as a seasoned business owner with, with really a proven track record of creating, building, maintaining and growing and expanding my family-owned and operated businesses across three states, New York, Connecticut, and Massachusetts. It's really given me the fortitude and the experience that Weston requires and deserves. On the subject of politics, and I've seen this firsthand inside the meetings, politics must not have any place in policy and decision-making. Weston's a community made up of really strong, educated families who deserve a similar person acting as a steward for the continued fiscal health of our town. And lastly, I think that we as leaders on these boards, we need to remember and live by a philosophy that, that we're here to serve the community and it's not the other way around. I think that that sometimes gets lost when people are on boards and they do assume a position of power. I think that is essential in governing personally and professionally. We need to bring back this ability to the town, the attention to detail and the commitment and the ability to work with people from all backgrounds and across political parties is really essential. And I, and I know that I can do that. I've done it throughout my businesses and throughout my personal life. And so I think that I'm extremely optimistic about where Weston's headed. And I'm very excited to be a part of the board now. And I do, I do believe that I will be a strong member of the board going forward. Should you, should you vote me in? And lastly, my name is Jamie Zepperneck, and I'm asking for your vote. Thank you.
Mr. Essies.
Thanks, Laura. It's a privilege to serve as a member of the Weston Board of Finance and to have served as its chairman for the past eight years. And I hope the accomplishments of the board and my leadership will allow me to continue to have this privilege on November 2nd. I'd like to address a different topic, a topic that Jamie alluded to, and it's the negative destructive discourse we're experiencing nationally at the state level, most recently by a legislator who equated the governor's vaccine requirements to Adolf Hitler and Nazi Germany. And unfortunately, here in Weston, everyone on this panel and those and other boards and commissions are offering to volunteer their time and knowledge for the betterment of our community. Yet there's a group who choose to denigrate our work with negative hateful and misinformation while hiding behind the shadow of Facebook. Does this group really believe we're plotting in dark rooms, thinking of ways to educate our children, provide municipal services, and make an even better Weston in a fiscally irresponsible manner? No, Weston does not have the highest per capita educational cost. Our housing values have not declined by 40%. We have not wasted hundreds of millions of dollars in educational spending. And yes, we have responded to the myriad of Freedom of Information requests, which are ongoing by following the commission's rules. We are a nation and a community of free speech. However, free speech does not mean hateful and misinformed speech can be condoned without comment. There are five recent residents in this debate and myself who would hope to and want to serve on the Board of Finance and others wanting to do the same on other town boards. What they all deserve is respect for their efforts and not being subject to negative and ill-informed comments from keyboard crusaders who would rather bark at the moon than come forward and be counted. Thanks to the League of Women Voters. Thanks to everybody who has been participating in this event. Thanks to Roan, Jeff, Jamie, Mike, and Travis for wanting to better Weston. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Essies. Mr. Warr.
Hi, thank you very much. And thanks for everybody who joined the debate today. Thanks for all the town members that actually are sitting at home watching this and will watch it later. Being a better informed voter is definitely what we're trying to do. For me, Weston is a great town to live in, and I believe there are even better days ahead of us. But with that said, there's no reason why we have to accept the current status quo. Deferred maintenance to our school buildings, deteriorating roadways, and the lack of amenities, it all can be a thing of the past. To achieve the best outcome for our town success, I look forward to working together with other board members to make the right decision and direct the town funds toward the line items that impact our lives for the better. Currently, I have three children in the Western School System, our youngest in kindergarten. And I want to make sure that their education is properly funded, while also keeping in mind those in town who did not have kids in school anymore. Our family plans to grow old in this town and hope to be not putting up a for sale sign at the same time as a senior sign in the years to come. I encourage Weston residents to expect more from our leadership. And with that said, it's okay to expect more from me. I look forward to serve the board with complete transparency. I'm not afraid to address the tough issues, and I encourage involvement by all Weston residents. If elected, I will be reachable by all members of Weston by phone, by email, however you want to get in contact with me. Another thing that I'd like to address is in 2018, we had a survey where the town, 75% of the townspeople voted the taxes made it, or actually responded that taxes made it difficult to afford living in Weston. And the number one concern is affordability, including that they were too high. It's an issue which I do not believe has been addressed in the past three years. And if you're concerned, if you're not concerned about how high your taxes are, you should be concerned where the money is spent. Previous boards did not do their homework, and we're now left with a $1 million surplus in the BOE. From what I've heard from parents, that money could have definitely been used for a more robust learning experience remotely. It could also have been used toward our road paving. I hope that coming to the board, I could bring an outside perspective from a towns person that doesn't have a financial background in finance, but does have a business background running a successful business for the past 13 years. Thank you very much. And if you have any questions, please come see me tomorrow at the Grange between 1:00 and 5:00.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
I want to thank the League of Women Voters and our moderator Laura for hosting this debate. And I want to thank my panelists and all the members of the Board of Finance who aren't here today for being willing to serve our town. My wife and I have lived in Weston for 28 years. We raised two daughters here, as well as four goats, four German Shurhur pointers, a flock of chickens, and a pony. And I've served the last four years on the Board of Finance and currently serve as the vice chairman. And I'm asking for your vote in November so that I can be reelected to the board. I pledge to work as a member of the Board of Finance to find the right sustainable path, to best achieve the legitimate, in my opinion, competing interests and priorities that manifest themselves in our town's budget and spending. And to me, these priorities are number one, ensuring excellent schools and high quality essential town services. But two, continually moderating our town operating spending, tax burden, and mill rate. Three, making sure we maintain a strong balance sheet, including a AAA rating. And four, charting a smart path to invest more going forward in capital for school and town facilities and equipment and road paving. And five, wisely taking advantage of our current excess surplus, potentially funds from the American Recovery Act, together with the payoff of town debt and material reduction in debt service costs in the next few fiscal years to help achieve those first four priorities. So I pledge to work to find that right path for our town by advocating a multi-year view for budgets and capital projects, continued fiscal moderation and discipline by our town, more active sharing of fiscal issues and goals across the Boards of Finance, Selectment, and Education, and a common sense, balanced mindset by the Board of Finance. You can be assured that I'll approach these issues we face on the Board of Finance with a balanced perspective that's not biased towards any preconceived or polarized view that is fact-based and that's rooted in finding the best answers for our town. I hope to get your support and vote in November for Roan Baldwin. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin. Mr. Ember.
Want to thank the League for hosting this forum where the candidates all have an opportunity to engage in civil discourse about the future of Weston. The Board of Finance in the next several years is going to be asked to consider capital expenditures to address the town's infrastructure, deferred maintenance, projects like the sidewalks, road repair, school campus upkeep. All of this is going to require careful, long-term planning as we manage our economic resources, maintain the excellence of our schools, and support our AAA credit rating. And at the same time, Weston's going to be retiring much of its bond debt. And what we will do with that excess debt service capacity is an important question for this board and how we go about prioritizing our budget choices in the future. We need to think about the next generation. I have the skills that I believe will enable me to be an effective member of the Board of Finance. I am a Managing Director in the Government Municipal and Education Practice of Riveron Consulting. I have advised states, counties, and cities on matters including budget efficiency, cost management, performance improvement, K through 12 funding, pensions, public safety, and fiscal sustainability. At the state level, I've served as a member of the Connecticut Pension Sustainability Commission, and I've testified before the Connecticut General Assembly on matters regarding our state budget. I'm also very proud of my pro bono work as the Board Chairman of the Connecticut Democracy Center in Hartford, where our mission is to inspire people of all ages to engage in civic life and strengthen their communities. And in that spirit, I am ready to engage on behalf of Weston. And I am grateful for the opportunity to serve, and I thank you for your vote on November 2nd.
Thank you. Finally, Mr. Farr.
Yes, thank you very much for this opportunity to participate in this very informative debate. Let me just say that from my perspective, Weston is a very special town. It's been my home for the last 38 years. My family has benefited greatly from its natural beauty, its character, community spirit, and school system. I'm a formidable civil engineer with both design and construction experience. I have done graduate work in finance and accounting, and I have over 20 years of management consulting experience in both the public and private sectors. I have had the honor of serving on various town committees and boards, including Vice Chair of Weston's Water Study, Planning and Zoning Commission for 11 years, four years as chairman, the Town Sidewalk Committee, the Superintendent Search Committee, and the Board of Finance since November of 2018. As has already been stated here, Weston is a, is in very good fiscal shape, but our continuing challenge is our longer-term financial sustainability. Without significant growth in the grand list, our capacity to fund annual school and town mill rate, which is already above all of those surrounding towns except for Reading, we really need to keep a cap on spending increases of 2% or less. My voting record to this point supports that. I did not vote for two, for two of the last three sessions. Going forward, to keep that in check, it's going to require strong collaboration with the Board of Ed and with the Board of Selectmen with an eye to must haves versus nice to haves. I will continue to support the board with financial modeling and maintaining monitoring property transfers leading up to the next revaluation in 2023. I will also continue to advocate for leveraging the town's bonding capacity to bring our aging road infrastructure up to par with surrounding towns, seeking and leveraging state grants for infrastructure, outsourcing non-core school and town services, as well as collaborating with neighboring towns for those services and prudent replacement and maintenance of town equipment and facilities. Please vote on Tuesday, November 2nd for myself, Jeff Farr, and my fellow Republicans who are all working together to keep Weston special. Thank you for your opportunity to serve the community.
Thank you very much. And thank you to all the candidates for participating. And thank you to our tech person, Cole, who has kept us all in line. I appreciate the civility that has been demonstrated here. And I appreciate all of you serving. I think Mr. Essie's point is very well taken. We are volunteers, and we do this because we love it, and we do it because we care. And I think that's important to remember that we're all doing this for the benefit of the town, and our children are watching. So thank you very much. Join the League, and don't forget to vote on November 2nd. And now I'm going to let us go, and I really don't like the end of Zoom. It's not very collegial and being in a room and shaking hands and saying thank you. But I, I thank all of you for participating. Weston is a terrific town, and it continues to be so. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, all of you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thanks, everybody. Have a great day.